From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
(laughter) Board of Supervisors. Ma'am Clerk, please call a roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Oh, here.
Supervisor Scrivner. Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Morning, everybody. Mr. Scrivner sends his apologies for not being here. He's gonna try to make it for this afternoon. He's a little down, not feeling well. His fever broke this morning, so we're hopeful and looking forward to seeing him this afternoon. We'll start off this meeting with a salute to the flag led by Lordus Nilon, which would be present for us, and then please remain standing for a moment of silence, prayer, meditation.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't want to say anything. Okay, let's have a report on actions taken in closed session from Monday, December 19, 2016.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, your board met in closed session to conduct department head evaluations of 14 department heads. There are no reportable actions coming out of that closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. There are agendas up by the doors as you enter the boardroom. Please help yourself so you can follow along with us. We'll kick off this morning's meeting with a review of the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the item number considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. Going through the agenda, under Appointments, Items 4 through 9, Art of Control of County Clerk, Items 14 through 16, Clerk of the Board, 18 and 19, Employees Training Resources, 20 and 21, Fire Department is 22 through 26, Human Services is 27 through 30, Mental Health Services is 31 through 35, Probations is 36, Public Health Services is 37, 38, Public Health Services Emergency Medical Services Division, Items 39, Environmental Health Division is 40, Sheriff Department is 41 and 42. Does any member of the public wish to make comment on these consent agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close the public session and bring it back to the board.
Motion on consent.
Second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Scrivner.
Great. That takes us to item number one, resolution honoring John Nilon, county administrative officer upon his retirement with 31 years of dedicated service to County of Kern. That'll be done by me, and I'll make the motion. Second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Scrivner.
Okay. (laughter) Yeah, that's right. For whom the bell tolls. It tolls for you, Johnny boy. What a great honor it is for the Chairman of the Board to make this presentation as resolution honoring one of Kern County's finest, someone who's been there through thick and thin for 31 years and who has led the charge to responsible governance and respect for the public. John, thank you very much for all you've done, all the years of watching you in action, for me, the past four, and for other board members even longer. It's been a pleasure. It's been a joy, and I have a resolution to read. Okay, it's this big font, so I can read it. Honoring and commending John Nilon upon his retirement with 31 years of dedicated service to Kern County. John Nilon began his County of Kern service in 1979 with three-month tenure as a junior planner, later joined the Personnel Department in 1985 as a personnel analyst. And he served in increasing responsible administrative positions with the Health Department, the County Administrative Office, and the Department of Human Services. In 1998, Mr. Nilon was appointed as Employers Training Resource Director, becoming Child Support Services Director in 2003, Public Health Services Director in 2007, County Administrative Officer in 2009, and interim Chief Executive Officer of Kern Medical Center in 2013 while continuing as CAO. He's double-hatted. Mr. Nilon served in five departments in his county career, more than any other administrator in Kern County history, and at each department he instituted programs and partnerships that earned statewide recognition and national recognition for innovation and performance, vis a vis the "I'm in" button that we all were told to wear in support of his efforts to create the team over at KMC. As CAO, John Nilon forged innovative tax exchange agreements enabling land annex stations by the cities of Bakersfield and Shafter, led the process to transfer Kern Medical Center to an independent hospital authority, oversaw construction of a new information technology center and county jail, worked to secure state funding for county corrections programs under criminal justice realignment, led the relocation and transformation of county animal services that had reduced euthanasia of animals by nearly 50%, made the county's civil service system more streamlined and efficient, built substantial budget reserves that will enable a multi-year strategy to reduce spending while minimizing the impact on county services. John Nilon has volunteered his leadership to more than 25 community organizations, including the Boy Scouts, Red Cross, Kern County Network for Children, Henrietta Wheel Child Guidance Clinic, Kern County Economic Opportunity Commission, and Vision 2020. Mr. Nilon's relationship with California State University, Bakersfield, began with his undergraduate degree and continued with his master's degree in business administration. His tenure as an adjunct faculty member and selection as Alumni of the Year, culminating in his appointment as Regent of the California State University System. Mr. Nilon leaves a legacy of efficient county government, spirit of innovation, and outstanding civil service to his community. Therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, does hereby honor and commend John Nilon upon his retirement from more than 31 years of outstanding service, adopted September 20, 2016, signed by all of us. John, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. (applause) Did you notice how he was tearing up? It wasn't as cold. He was actually tearing up. I'm sure of it. At least, that's what I'm telling myself. And again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning, and thank you. That was very, very kind. But to me, the real value of words like this in someone's retirement is that it provides the very needed platform for thank yous. First, of course, is to thank my wonderful wife and my beautiful family for all their support for all these years. No matter where you work or what you do, the support of your family is essential, and I have been blessed. While the concept of my filing for early retirement may have crossed their minds once or twice, they always supported me through all the challenges that we have, so I want to say thank you. I also have my staff here in full regalia, and I want to thank them. Without staff, nothing happens, and I want to talk a little bit about that later. My journey with the county has been long, like this speech will be, but it's been a wonderful career, and it's a rare privilege and pleasure to work at a place where it's so hard to say goodbye. Your kind words listed a number of accomplishments, but to be true and truthful with you, I did none of them, not a single one. And anyone who says differently is just wrong. These accomplishments happened because of the incredible county team of employees we have. From the Board of Supervisors to the most junior employee, we are first county employees. None of us are more important than anyone else, and when we start thinking that we are more important, we compromise our effectiveness. But when we think like and behave like a team, outstanding things happen like those that were mentioned. So it is wholly appropriate that I take this time to thank the people who were my colleagues and my teammates for 31 years of my life. I have long held and often stated that I could match the quality of anyone from private industry with someone from the county. It has been the professional honor of my life to serve with these exceptional employees. Thank you so much. And of course, I tip my hat to our county departments, all of you out there today. You have performed near miracles with the resources that you've been given. You have stretched your budgets and reworked services and performed outstandingly, and I want to thank you all for that. The legacy I think that I'd like to say I've left is that we did it. We weren't just marking time. We made a difference. We made the county stronger. We made the county more transparent, and we left her in good hands. All in all, not bad, not bad at all. And hey, James, we even got one good story out of the Bakersfield Californian for our animal services, right, Nick? As I close, we know that it is the universal truth, and we all have to face, whether we want to or not, that eventually everything ends. As much as I've looked forward to this day, I knew it would be the end of an important part of my life. But endings are inevitable. Leaves fall. You close a book. You say goodbye, and today is one of those days for me. So thank you all from the bottom of my heart for your kindness, support, and friendship. You've supported me in the difficult times, and with you, I've experienced many, many, many positive moments that I always will remember, and I will hold you dear in my heart for all the things that you've done for me. Thank you. As you move forward, don't be afraid to make mistakes, to stumble, and to fall, because most of the time, the greatest rewards comes from doing things that scare you the most. Who knows where your life will take you? The road is long, and in the end, every step of the journey is a destination in itself. So I have some parting advice for the Board of Supervisors. As I see it, there are only three keys to the county's success: your employees, your employees, and your employees. Honor them. Treat them with respect. Engage them. They indeed hold the answers to all of our problems, including the untapped resources of our employee associations. Train them and get out of their way. Think strategically. Your board makes excellent decisions every Tuesday, but it can at times seem like a weekly series of random decisions rather than decisions that form a cohesive fabric of tactics and strategy. Spend the time and effort to develop your strategies and stick to them. As an example, complete the proposed strategic financial plan and be disciplined in its execution. This may be the hardest thing this board does, but it also may be the most rewarding. Finally, I have some things to say, encouraging words to say to Mr. Alsop. Ryan's not here right now, but I will share these with him, but I want to make this public declaration that I am excited about the future for Kern County. And Ryan, in our office, in your office, you have a great team, perhaps the best team, so please take care of them. We've got great talent in all the key leadership positions throughout Kern County, and given the chance, they will lead the county to new heights and new achievements. Our community is wonderful and so giving. Reach out to all segments of our community. Be active, and you will receive great rewards. Finally, ignore the naysayers, and there will be many. They will come from the outside, and unfortunately, they will come from within as well. Don't let their bitterness distract you in any way from your efforts and your leadership in making Kern County the best it can ever be. Calvin Coolidge once said, "Our real problem is not our strength today; it is rather the vital necessity of action today to ensure our strength tomorrow." So thank you all, and God bless Kern County.
(applause) Did you get some over there? Get some pictures? No, 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 Lordus. No, 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 no. John, you're in the middle.
In the middle.
Yeah, everybody just crowd down. Everybody.
I'm in the middle.
One more here. Gotcha.
Great. Outstanding. Good job, John. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate you squishing my food. Give me the... Congratulations. Thank you. We're not done yet with that one. Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, thank you for all that you've given us. I know that you've given us absolutely everything you had to give, and when you see someone when no one else is around, when you are alone and facing what seemed to be potentially career-ending, life-changing decisions that will not only affect you personally but affect our entire community, and you really, really squeeze hard, you see what comes out of someone, and I have seen what comes out of John, and it is good, and it is honorable, and he is human, and he has his struggles as well, but you have given us your absolute best every time we've called upon you, and I'm grateful for that. John and I have talked about the fact that no matter what you do, you can give out golden bars, and you will still be criticized. That's something that John has said to me. I'm reminded that while accountability is important, it is not the critic who counts. It is the person who's willing to lay everything on the line, risk everything they have to make something better, and you have done that. Thank you. I appreciate your friendship, and I wish you God's blessings on you and Lordus and the rest of your family in a long retirement.
Can I jump in for just a moment? I'd like to echo that, and I think it was interesting, I noticed at your retirement party the other night, that you were surrounded by a bunch of people that admired you, admire you, and truly like you, and I think that's a testament to the person that you are and the kind of leader that you've been, and I want you to know that I recognize that, and we're going to miss you, and we appreciate you very much, John. Well, they paid me to go there, but I didn't offer my observations, John, down there because I was busy reading that thing, and I wanted to comment that first and foremost, you have brought a level of respect for the public process which we all embrace, and I think it follows your lead, whether it's going out to 26 libraries or 26 trips, or whether it's doing battle here. First and foremost, people understand that dealing with a respectful audience who respectfully listens and may or may not agree, but you extend that courtesy, and I hope to emulate that for my entire time on this board, that I can do as good a job as you have done in demonstrating that respect. So thank you very much. Whether it's KMC, CEO, I'm all in, or CAO here, you have done a special job, and we're all better off because of it. Thank you very much for all your support, your help. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have item number two proclaimed January 4, 2017, as California Aeronautical University Day in Kern County. Motion on the proclamation.
Second.
There are motions, second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Scrivner.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a pretty unique proclamation. I'm gonna say just a few words and turn it over to our Director of Airports, Mr. Strickland, and let him expound a little further. This is a proclamation. Let me just read a little bit about this. The California Aeronautical University is training the next generation of aviation professionals right here at Meadows Field Airport. And due to the looming, this is something I did not know until I read this board letter, there is a looming retirement of a generation of pilots in the United States and the growth of air travel markets around the world. There is now a growing worldwide shortage of pilots. Graduates of the flight programs at the university's School of Aviation will be filling a critical need in that industry. The university, with its expansive, purpose-built campus, is a really unique world-class facility that we have right here in Kern County, right under our noses, and I would venture to say that a lot of people don't even know what we have here, and I would really be interested in getting out there and learning a lot more about it. It's right here in Bakersfield and Kern County, and it's putting Kern County on the map as a leading destination for students seeking aviation training and education. The California Aeronautical University is truly an important asset to Kern County. It's in the Third District. I'm gonna turn it over to Supervisor Maggert here, either before or at the end, whenever you'd like to jump in there. But it's really an asset for all of Kern County. It affects all the communities of Kern County, and it's an asset to every district. It should be honored for developing tomorrow's aviation professionals and promoting Kern County as the premier destination for aviation training and education on the West Coast. I'm gonna read the proclamation, turn it over to Mr. Strickland. It reads this: "The Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed January 4, 2017, as California Aeronautical University Day in Kern County, and the recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chair Mick Gleason, dated today, December 20, 2016." Mr. Strickland.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. We're not done yet with that one. Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, thank you for all that you've given us. I know that you've given us absolutely everything you had to give. And when you see someone when no one else is around, when you are alone and facing what seemed to be potentially career-ending, life-changing decisions that will not only affect you personally, but affect our entire community, and you really, really squeeze hard, you see what comes out of someone. And I have seen what comes out of John, and it is good, and it is honorable, and he is human and he has his struggles as well. But you have given us your absolute best every time we've called upon you, and I'm grateful for that. John and I have talked about the fact that no matter what you do, you could give out golden bars and you will still be criticized. That's something that John has said to me. I'm reminded that while accountability is important, it is not the critic who counts. It is the person who's willing to lay everything on the line, risk everything they have to make something better, and you have done that. Thank you. I appreciate your friendship and I wish you God's blessings on you and Lourdes and the rest of your family and a long retirement.
Can I jump in for just a moment? I'd like to echo that. And I think it was interesting, I noticed at your retirement party the other night, that you were surrounded by a bunch of people that admired you, admire you, and truly like you. And I think that's a testament to the person that you are and the kind of leader that you've been. And I want you to know that I recognize that and we're going to miss you. And we appreciate you very much, John.
Well, they paid me to go there, but I didn't offer my observations, John, down there because I was busy reading that thing. And I wanted to comment that first and foremost, you have brought a level of respect for the public process which we all embrace, and I think it follows your lead. Whether it's going out to 26 libraries or 26 trips, or whether it's doing battle here, first and foremost, people understand that dealing with a respectful audience who respectfully listens and may or may not agree, but you extend that courtesy. And I hope to emulate that for my entire time on this board, that I can do as good a job as you have done in demonstrating that respect. So thank you very much. Whether it's KMC, CEO, I'm all in, or CAO here, you have done a special job, and we're all better off because of it. Thank you very much for all your support, your help. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have item number two, proclaimed January 4th, 2017, as California Aeronautical University Day in Kern County.
Motion on the proclamation.
Second.
There are motions, second. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Scrivener.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a pretty unique proclamation. I'm going to say just a few words and turn it over to our Director of Airports, Mr. Strickland, and let him expound a little further. This is a proclamation. Let me just read a little bit about this. The California Aeronautical University is training the next generation of aviation professionals right here at Meadows Field Airport. And due to the looming, this is something I did not know until I read this board letter, there is a looming retirement of a generation of pilots in the United States and the growth of air travel markets around the world. There is now a growing worldwide shortage of pilots. Graduates of the flight programs at the university's School of Aviation will be filling a critical need in that industry. The university, with its expansive, purpose-built campus, is a really unique, world-class facility that we have right here in Kern County, right under our noses. And I would venture to say that a lot of people don't even know what we have here. And I would really be interested in getting out there and learning a lot more about it. It's right here in Bakersfield and Kern County, and it's putting Kern County on the map as a leading destination for students seeking aviation training and education. The California Aeronautical University is truly an important asset to Kern County. It's in the 3rd District. I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Maggert here, either before or at the end, whenever you'd like to jump in there. But it's really an asset for all of Kern County. It affects all the communities of Kern County, and it's an asset to every district. It should be honored for developing tomorrow's aviation professionals and promoting Kern County as the premier destination for aviation training and education on the West Coast. I'm going to read the proclamation, turn it over to Mr. Strickland. It reads this. "The Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, has officially proclaimed January 4th, 2017, as California Aeronautical University Day in Kern County, and the recognition has been entered into the official board minutes, signed by our Honorable Chair Mick Gleason, dated today, December 20th, 2016." Mr. Strickland.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. When we received back the IFTA facility, all 21 acres and its fine campus, it was one of those things where it's like, what do you do with it now? Finding California Aeronautical University and getting them in there some year and a half ago. The significance of January 4th marks the date in which they received their first student there. The growth there has exceeded all expectations and forecasts, and it is phenomenal to see the students earning both a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in aviation science and aviation business management. It is phenomenal to see all of the new aircraft that they've acquired, that they're using to train the students with, and the jobs that have been created at the university. It blows beyond the expectations that we had. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the President, Matthew Johnston.
Sir, Chair, Board, we really appreciate this. It's been quite a journey. California Aeronautical University took possession of this fine building from the County of Kern last August. We worked diligently until starting our first corps of students in January. And this January 9th, we'll be starting another set of students as we start every 10 weeks. And we'll be just under 40 students at the university. This could not be done without the strong efforts of all of the staff and the faculty that are there. We have some of us joining behind us, behind me here. They are working every day to stand up this university, and we are competing nationally for pilot training and becoming a world-class facility that is putting not only Bakersfield on the map, but the West Coast, because there's nothing like what we're doing. And without the support of Kern County, the Director of Airports, Richard Strickland, we just would not be able to be accomplishing what we are at the rate that we're accomplishing it. So we appreciate the support and we enjoy the great relationships that we're maintaining. And thanks to Richard Strickland and his efforts and his staff also supporting some of the things in the building and the facilities, we're able to accomplish what we are. So again, I want to thank everybody for everything, and this is much appreciated, and we'll hang it proudly and welcome all of you to come visit and get a ride in the simulator and see if you can keep the plane in the air. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Supervisor Maggert?
Gentlemen, I want to congratulate you for the vision that you have, that you could make this happen. You're correct in your regard for Richard being a vital part of that. It appeared for a while that it might be a stark future for the airport without something like a CAU there. So thank you, Richard, for helping that happen. But most of the praise, most of the gratitude on my part is to you guys, Matt, and your family and your leadership team, for the great job that you've done. One of my favorite lines from a movie is, "This is the stuff that dreams are made of." Well, this is the place where dreams are dreamt and they come true. And not only is it vital to the airport, the airport could not be successful nearly the level that it is without the university being there. Not only does it create and help sustain many, many jobs in our community, but it's the place where dreams come true. And people can aspire to a life they didn't imagine they could have, and it happens because you guys do that. So thank you for doing that for us. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. That'll bring us to item number three, public requests. Requests of Ramona Prieto, Acting Director, California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, for Agent Josh Porter, District Supervisor ABC, to address the board and present 2015-16 Grant Assistance Program Award for Significant Accomplishment to the Kern County Sheriff's Department. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time today. My name is Josh Porter. I'm the supervising agent for the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, Bakersfield Office. And on behalf of the Director, who unfortunately cannot be here today, it's my pleasure to present a significant accomplishment award to the Kern County Sheriff's Department for their outstanding work and assistance to the alcoholic beverage control for the 2015-2016 fiscal grant year. Before I present, if I could briefly explain the significance of why I'm here today for the award. Each year, law enforcement agencies throughout the state of California submit grant proposal requests to the department to receive funding from our grant assistance program to conduct ABC operations. Those proposals state goals and objectives that the respective agency will attempt to accomplish during that grant year. In July of 2015, the Sheriff's Office Rural Crimes Investigation Unit received just under $100,000 for a grant that year, which was ultimately approved to be put in place by you all, the board. During that year, the Sheriff's Office conducted 111 operations. They visited over 250 ABC licensed locations, resulting in a total of 213 arrests for various sections of codified laws occurring in and around ABC licensed locations. As a result of their efforts, ABC licensees combined suffered total suspension days of 140 days, and they paid over $40,000 in fines. Additionally, the Sheriff's Office provided ABC training to over 200 employees that represented over 100 ABC licensed establishments. In addition to their accomplishments that year and completing 100% of their goals and objectives, the award is given today to agencies that went above and beyond and completed 150% of their goals and objectives. Only 11 agencies were able to accomplish that that year out of 44 agencies that were given grants. In addition to the outstanding work completed by the Sheriff's Office Rural Crimes Investigation Unit, led by Sergeant Robert Winn, I'd also like to thank the Reserve Deputy Sheriffs of the Kern County Sheriff's Department, who combined donated over 900 hours to assist with the grant, saving the county approximately $51,000. And most importantly, I'd like to thank and recognize Grant Coordinator, Deputy Dave Wigan, for his commitment to sustaining our working relationship and for all of his tireless efforts to ensure the successfulness of the grant. The goals and objectives would not have been met or exceeded without the efforts of Deputy Wigan. On behalf of the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, I thank the Kern County Sheriff's Department for their service and commitment to help reduce youth access to alcohol and alcohol-related crime. It's my pleasure to present the Significant Achievement Award to the Kern County Sheriff's Department.
Thanks, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. You know, this award goes deeper than what Josh was able to portray. If we go back the last several years, during budget cuts, we eliminated the vice unit. Nobody's assigned a vice any longer. Robert Winn, Sergeant Rural Crime Task Force, volunteered to pick this up. And Dave Wigan, standing behind me, has worked extra help for, I don't know how many years, in the Sheriff's Office, but a lot of years. And during the extra help, when his time off would come, where he wouldn't get paid, he continued to work. He didn't take those two or three months off, he continued to work. So this vice operation that they've done, they've excelled at, but it's above and beyond the Rural Crime Task Force duties that they've had. So great work to them, and this guy that's standing behind me, Sergeant Winn, they make this happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Robert, you want to say anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number 10, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make or refer to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take actions, direct the staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited. Two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making a presentation.
Good morning, Bill Walker, your Kern County Mental Health Director, soon-to-be Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. I've been asked to be prepared to come forward and at times talk about lean six sigma or other efficiencies. And today really isn't that day. What I'm going to do today, though, in honoring both Christmas and the innovation history of John Nylon, and realizing today that John and I share the ability to juggle, I thought I would show you that as you think of efficiencies, and I think most of our departments do, you start looking at everything, and how could I be more efficient, how could I be more effective? And so, like many aging athletes, I've done all kinds of exercise routines. But I'm now going to show you the best full upper body exercise ever. And it's the most effective and efficient and time-limited exercise, as long as I don't drop them. So, these weigh five pounds each, and if you could start the timer, we could see how long I can go.
Very interesting.
And John's going to do this when I'm done, right?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yep.
Now, usually I can do this for between 100 to 200 times each. And I can guarantee you that if we have each Board of Supervisor do this in front of the meeting, everyone will be in better shape. So in honor of John, effectiveness and efficiency. Do you want to try them again?
No, I don't.
Okay. Effectiveness and efficiency, I think, is a county motto, and I just wanted to use this as the week of Christmas, just to honor you, say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and keep exercising. I dropped one.
We can fix that toe at Kern Medical Board.
Thank you, I think. Okay, anyone else? Public presentations. We'll move on to board member announcements. Seeing none, we'll keep going to airports. Mr. Strickland has reported on parking rate changes at William A.M. Thomas Terminal at Meadows Field Airport affected January 1st, 2017, to include the short-term rate for each 30-minute interval after the first 15 minutes free will be $2, and the daily maximum increase will run from $12 to $13. Mr. Strickland.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. This is a receive-and-file item. Under the terms of the agreement with Parking Management Systems, the Airport Director and Parking Management System did a full review of parking rates within the Southern California region. And this is only for short-term. Last time before your board, two years ago, I raised the rate of the long-term parking lot by a dollar per day. And now this will raise the short-term rate to give a better overall differentiation in costs between the short-term rate, the long-term rate. And the ranges were from about $13 to $36 for short-term parking in the competing airports in Southern California. So it is reasonable to raise the rate effective January 1 by $1 for the short-term parking. That is, in a nutshell, the overall report. If you've got any questions, please let me know.
That we may. So if you just grab a seat.
Yep.
A little bit of the public and see what the public has to say about it. Any thoughts out there? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to motion to receive and file.
Second. There are motions, second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Three ayes, two absent. Supervisor Scrivener, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Item 13, Request to Set Public Hearing to Consider Amendment of Uncodified Ordinance G5762, Increasing Certain Fees Charged by the Assessor. Assessor, yes, sir?
Hello, Lee Smith, Assistant Assessor. We've done some research and looked at our fee schedule, which has not been adjusted since 1995, and have looked to make that a more current fee schedule. The fee schedule themselves is a very small portion of our budget, but it, again, has not been reviewed for quite some time.
Is that your presentation, sir?
You've been provided with documentation as to the amount of change. The components that we found that were a big item that hasn't, that has changed over since 1992, some of these fees were put in place almost 25 years ago, is the component for benefits. And at that time, we were using a benefit factor of about 1.3, and now it's almost 1.8. So it really adds a lot. That's the major component to increasing these fees that we're requesting.
So these fees are covering your costs?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, you've completed with your presentation?
Yes.
You may grab a seat. We may have some questions filed. Does anybody in the public have any thoughts? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for common consideration.
I'll move the staff's recommendation.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Scrivener.
Okay, moving right along, we'll go to the Board of Trade, number 17.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm sorry, you read the introduction. It's my first time here.
Proposed ordinance amended in Chapter 2.05 of the Kern County Ordinance Code to adopt the new seal of the County of Kern.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Teresa Hitchcock from my office, Director of Board of Trade and Employer Training Resource, will handle this item.
Good morning, Chairman Gleason, members of the board. As you may recall, the revision of the seal has been a fairly lengthy process, as was pointed out in the Bakersfield Californian the other day. We first brought the concept of revision of the seal to your board on December 8th of 2015. And there are a number of elements on the seal that are not as representative of the county as perhaps some newer things that are going on within the county. I think that is the current seal up there. Yeah. So this is the current seal that we have. The Space Shuttle Program, as you know, is, no longer exists. And we have, of course, the largest portfolio of renewable energy in the entire state, which is not represented on the seal. So we felt that it was time to update it and simplify it, because at this size, the seal, of course, most of the elements are readily recognizable. But when you reduce the size of the seal for letterhead, a number of these elements, you cannot really tell what they are on a smaller version. So we felt that simplifying it and modernizing it and also being more reflective of the county as it exists today was a good idea. As part of the revision of the seal, we had a public survey that was conducted in January of 2016. The Bakersfield Californian actually published the survey link on January 13th in the paper. We received 1,500 survey responses. In March of 2016, a call to artists was put out with the list of the top 21 elements from the survey, recognizing that we could not possibly include all 21 elements, because it would have unnecessarily cluttered the seal. So we were trying to represent our significant industries, again, energy and natural resources, agriculture, and aerospace and defense. And so, we have a new proposed seal. So we have also added some of our unique geography to the seal, which is Red Rock Canyon, the Tohatcheby Mountains, of course, the Kern River is represented in the seal, coming down to the valley floor, where our top five crops that are planted and harvested are represented, which are citrus, pistachios, almonds, carrots, and grapes. And then we have our renewable energy represented by the windmills and the sun, and then, of course, oil, since it still is such a staple. And then we did modernize the external part of the seal to be more reflective of current seals that we're seeing from other counties. So therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the proposed new seal for the County of Kern, waive the reading, and introduce the proposed ordinance. And that completes staff's report, and I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Teresa Hitchcock. Appreciate it. We may have some filed. Anybody in the public who should make comment on this, on a new seal? Yes, sir?
Michael Rau. We farm, and we farm cotton. In Kern County grows about 40,000 acres of cotton. The state of California grows 157,000 acres of cotton. We are the We are the major growers of cotton in the state of California. We also have about 130,000 bales of cotton we did this year. So the new seal does not predict, have cotton in it, the old seal does. And representing the cotton growers of Kern County, we'd like to see cotton in the seal or keep the old seal. Thank you. And also the cost on it, what is this going to cost the taxpayers to change this new seal over?
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Mrs. Hitchcock, could you comment on Mr. Rau's last question?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I can comment a little bit, and then if Ms. Hitchcock would like to comment, there is no cost associated with this. When we need to replace items or add new facilities, we will use the new seal. Most of the seals that you see on correspondence and letterhead are electronic JPEGs, so they're just transferred. So there's no real cost to making the change. Cotton currently, I should say cotton when the, the earlier seal was developed was number one in our product. It was, cotton was king. Cotton now is number 17 for Kern County. This reflects a much more accurate display of our agricultural products. If we added all 17 of the products, then the seal would be so crowded that it would, it would be meaningful. So that was the intent, that was the vision behind it, but we're certainly willing to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rau. Public hearing is closed. It's back to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm colorblind, so clearly I do not catch colors like the rest of you do. The depiction of the seal in the paper is much harder to read and differentiate, to me at least, than is the seal that is depicted on the screen today. So we'll, and that might just be because the print that the paper picked up was different. But we will control, will we not, with the, I don't know what the, even the right term is, but the brightness or the nature of the blue that's in the ring that has Kern County, California, we control that, do we not?
That is correct.
So it will be depicted in a way that is closer to this. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll give this about 30 more seconds, and then we'll see what else we can do.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the requested action this morning?
The requested action is to approve, waive reading, and introduce ordinance.
Teresa, or Ms. Hitchcock, may I, Chairman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is, I think, a really exciting and excellent portrayal of Kern County's many, many diverse opportunities and economic realities. I think you've done a great job. I know a lot of work has gone into this, and so I appreciate it. Lot of input. You never, ever can satisfy every single person in creating a symbol for, you know, vast and complex Kern County. So I think this is fantastic. Thank you for your hard work. Everybody's an expert on these things, certainly. And I think, you know, the input from the public has been very helpful. So I would move approval at this time.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes. Supervisor, can I?
Of course. Thank you. Run through again, please, the opportunities for public input.
Okay.
And when you're done with that, I have a follow-up.
Okay, so the process began last December with a board letter that came to the board talking about the request to revise the county seal. At that time, the Bakersfield Californian ran an article letting folks know that we were looking at revising the seal and we're looking for public input. Then in January, the Californian ran another article and published the survey link that the county put on its website for approximately a month in January, looking for public input. We received almost 1,500 survey responses that identified 21 elements, and we then put out a call to artists for...
Can I interrupt you there?
Mm-hmm.
The 21 elements were what people thought was important products or industries in Kern County?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. That was the survey results. And then there was a call to artists put out that was also published in the Californian. We received 15 different versions of the seal from that. And then there was a committee established by your board that looked at the different seals. A number of them were line drawings and weren't necessarily completed art that you could necessarily use for a seal. There were only a few that were actual complete designs. And from that, a design was selected that was done by actually a county artist, and that's the seal that you see before you today.
And as far as the agricultural elements on the seal, you or someone chose the top five, not you, but the artist that did this depiction, chose the top five?
The top five, that's correct, for crops that are planted and harvested within the county.
Okay. Mr. Rau, I appreciate you coming down and expressing your thoughts on that. There was another element to this that didn't make it that I was in favor of, and I'm learning to compromise these days, a lot. So I'm going to go ahead and support the recommendation. But I recognize that cotton is important and the people that grow it are an important part of the community. And there are many, many others, both on that long list of agricultural products, that are important as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've received one correspondence that asked about the dairy and ranching industries. Where are they? Do you happen to know off the top of your head where are they in that array of, how far they are below the five, top five as far as economic impact?
These are planted and harvested crops. Dairy would be number five and six, I believe, if you were including all agricultural commodities in the seal.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and we have a second, please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Scrivener.
Thank you. That brings us to item number adjourned closed session. The motion adjourned.
Moved.[1649.52]